Meeting to order, the City Council, Monday, November seventeenth. Could you please call the roll?
Alder Holquist.
Here.
Alder Wood.
Here.
Alder DePullo.
Here.
Alder Kugel.
Here.
Alder Bernstein.
Here.
Alder Radamacher.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here. Please rise for a pledge of allegiance.
By allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the great party for which it stands, one nation under God, universal, with liberty and justice in common.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from November third, 2025?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A second, any changes, corrections, additions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 The minutes are approved. We have one appearance this evening that I'm aware of. Doug, would you like to come up? Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. I wanted to just appear before you this evening just to give a brief update on the code enforcement efforts of the city, just some of the successes that have happened in the last few months, and of course, to be here to answer any questions possibly if they were to arise as well. But I provided a memo in the council packet and really just going to run through some of the highlights from that. So you may recall that the code enforcement responsibilities were realigned following staffing changes earlier this year. So Kim Richmond, who had or still has responsibilities as both the crossing guard as well as some parking oversight, an authority there, he has also taken on and assumed the code enforcement responsibilities and duties as well. So this portion of his work started in late June of this year, and he's currently doing about five hours of that a week versus about sixteen hours that were completed by the previous person that held the position. So I think one of the key things here is just really the efficiencies that we've gained through this. Kim really breaks up his day pretty well. Of course, it's sort of defined times throughout the day, the crossing duties, but when he's out doing parking enforcement, for example, he can also see code enforcement challenges, things that are happening as he's going through the city. So we do split sort of oversights of this position. I take care of the or oversee the code enforcement side. Police departments, of course, oversee the other portions of this work. So in terms of the direction that I had given him as this role began, it was really education of residents and businesses before the citations. So we really targeted door hangers, which is sort of a contact mechanism that allow us to list the citation or list the violation, what should be done to address it, and also to give some education, and of course, to include some contact information there as well. So a few items were addressed or a few categories were addressed and sort of listed specifically for focus. So that was trash or junk at the curb, overgrown vegetation, long grass, but also safety concerns. We've seen a few of those at corners, intersections, things like that where people can't see because of the overgrown vegetation, as well as signage violations as well. And so I had asked him to, in advance of tonight, sort of prepare some metrics as well so that you all can see some of the successes from this position. And I'm pleased to say there's nearly 100% compliance with the hangers, with the door hangers. Very much the educational approach has worked with people, just letting them know this is not something that you can do, or this, you know, needs to be taken care of in a different way. And so I'm really pleased with that. Seventy, seven zero yard signs or stake signs have been removed, and these are from Manona Drive, sort of in right-of-ways and things like that, or signs that have been incorrectly located. Certainly, if they're near to a private property, they have just been placed with the property. But we've seen a lot of sort of advertising and things like that that are in the right-of-way, and so those are pulled. And we do keep them for a couple of days, but after that, they can just be disposed of. And then also a couple feather signs removed. I think anybody on Plank Commission knows they are not allowed, or they were removed, but sort of coordinated with the businesses and worked with them as to what else they could do. So I think some really good successes there, as well as something that I think Kim is great at across all of his responsibilities is just his customer service and interaction. And so a lot of direct contacts here, I think he listed twenty-five direct contacts with residents, businesses, and just sort of explaining that he has a city cellphone, so calls, texts during those hours, and just really being a presence, a visible presence. The chief and the PD were able to get him equipped with lights on top of the vehicle and things, so there's just that visible presence, and even down to sort of the clothing. People know his role, his responsibilities here with the city. And then finally, just sort of fostering those connections as well. So we were able to connect with Pelletary in terms of the large item pickup to confirm that these items are scheduled, that there is a booking that's in place effectively for these to be removed, things like couches, things like that at the curb, that are not done as part of the normal pickup. And then also partnering with the city's arborist as well in terms of any sort of concerns with larger trees or any potential hazards like that. So moving forward, I would say that we're really looking to continue to build on those efficiencies across the city, efficiencies with the position, but also sort of how we communicate and how we continue this. Moving into the fall and winter months, it'll be brush pickup and compliance with that, as well as, of course, snow and ice removal, which will be a big one moving into winter. And then for myself, I'll be working with Kim directly and discussing with city leadership in terms of potential ordinance changes and updates, which I would say would probably focus most on general property maintenance, and that would be citywide as well. So certainly happy to answer questions, but just wanted to share some of the successes from this realignment and just some of the good news that's coming out of this position.
Since this is an appearance, even though this is an appearance in ordinarily, we would not be asking questions, given that this is a staff member providing an appearance. Does anybody have any questions that we'd like to ask Doug on this item?
Mayor, I have a question for Doug. Thank you for the update.
Absolutely.
Something, so on my street, you know, I think a lot of neighborhoods, we might have like a neighborhood chat text, and about two weeks ago, someone said, someone put out in the chat, "Somebody stole my yard sign." And so now that I listen to you, I wonder if a yard sign is in a right-of-way. I think you said that that sign is just being taken, or did you say the sign is being placed elsewhere? Is the resident being told why? Is the resident being, is there communication with the homeowner?
So I would say the location is probably the biggest differentiator there. So middle of Manona Drive or Broadway, those ones are typically removed, put in the back of the CSO vehicle. Private residences, sort of traditional neighborhoods, I would say typically they're laid down in the front yard of that property, or I know in other cases, he's actually just moved it. You know, if it's in the terrace and it shouldn't be, and instead it's put onto private property. So I think this instance might have been mentioned, and he did not, that he brought it up, that he'd had a call as well saying, "You've taken my sign."
Yeah.
And he hadn't moved one on that street, so I don't know specifically what happened in that case. But certainly, education is kind of the big goal here.
Exactly.
But certainly, safety as well, and so those in the right-of-way will go in the back of the vehicle. But direction really is education for residents as well, for any of those in a single family.
So that's exactly where I'm going. If the point is that, if the purpose is to educate, then just taking the sign or moving the sign doesn't accomplish that goal? But the door hanger might? Is that what the door hanger would say?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Joe.
Thank you very much.
So anyone else here for an appearance this evening? Don't see anybody online. Okay, then we will close the appearance section and go, there is no public hearing, there is no consent agenda. We'll move to council action items. G1, unfinished business. One A, consideration of resolution 2511-2843, adopting future compensation increases for the mayor and city council members of the city of Manona, brought forth by the city administrator.
There have been no questions, the staff has not received any questions on this one, Mayor, so.
Okay.
Everybody has, there's been no other changes. Everybody has any, happy to try and answer.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll move approval.
I just have a question.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Now.
Now, I have a question, sorry. Thank you for that reminder. So I appreciate that the packet includes comparative information between Manona and the other municipalities.
Yes.
Perhaps I'm missing something? The other municipalities' payment is listed as a payment per year, and Manona's is listed as a payment per month. Just.
What was your question on that, Alder?
Could we just do apples to apples?
The resolution has annual salary.
Right. Okay. It's just page 10, if you see how that Edgerton, Fitchburg, Middleton, it's all, this is what is paid per year, and then for Manona only, it says month. So it's just sort of, there's like an incongruency there, that's all.
Yeah.
All right.
Any other questions on the motion? Comments on the motion? I believe this is.
This will be roll call, yes.
Roll call.
I think this is a roll call.
This is a roll call?
I don't know that it increases it enough to be.
Roll call.
Yeah.
And it's not ordinance.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Who's the nay?
Rachel.
Rachel, okay. Absentient? Okay. The motion carries. Next on unfinished business, consideration of ordinance 11-25-799, amending section 18-16 of the Manona Code of Ordinances to rename the Distinguished Service Award Committee and revise its function, brought forth by me. There are no changes from the last meeting. Does anybody have, could I have a motion on this?
Move approval.
Second.
I have a second. Do I have any other discussion, questions, comments on this? Seeing none? Yes.
Funding for the event that they're supposed to put on, is this some, they assume there's some money in the.
There is in the operating budget. We, there's, it's part of a, I think it's a four or five thousand dollar item that's for a variety of things, but we talked about two thousand dollars towards this particular function.
Okay, great.
Yeah. That being the case, and given that this is an ordinance, this would be a roll call, could you please call the roll?
Alder Wood.
Aye.
Alder DePullo.
Aye.
Alder Kugel.
Aye.
Alder Bernstein.
Aye.
Alder Radamacher.
Aye.
Alder Holquist.
Aye.
Motion carries. That takes us to new business, a number G2A, consideration of resolution 25-11-2846, authorizing issuance and sale of 3.9 million general obligation refunding bond series 2025B, brought by the finance director. And this is starred for immediate approval, that being the case. Could I have a motion to suspend the rolls and take it out of order?
So moved.
Second.
I have a second. Mark, why don't you go ahead and explain, and then I'll call for a motion.
Yeah, just, all three of you, we're taking these out of order for, because last meeting, we approved the financial advisor, Jeff Balianji, to go out to the market, to go to the bonds market, and today they came back with the actual bonds that were proven tonight. So that's why we're asking to be approved tonight. The first ones were 3.9 million, or that number has changed. Jeff, explain why that number has changed. I sent a revised resolution out for that number. I don't have in front of me the exact number. So this is the 3.9 is related to the San Damiani purchase, the short term.
Hang on, Mark.
Yeah.
We still need to vote on that.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'm, my bad. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, it's for 3,640,000 is the actual refund, the refunding. So same dummy purchase, we had to take a short-term loan out just because of the timing of it. We also got $2 million on cash in hand, which is related to the Dane County grant that they gave us, so we're using that to reduce the balance. And so now we just went to the market. I'll let Jeff explain all that, all that information.
Well, thank you. Appreciate the opportunity. Congratulations again on an absolutely excellent credit rating, AA+, stable. Really appreciate all the effort Mark and administration put into this. A lot of work doing three issues at one particular time, but we did get some economies of scale. As Mark said, we need five, basically, we need 5.9 million to pay out the remaining power amount of that issue. I think it was over eight million when we originally.
Eight points.
Eight, yeah. So we paid it down since that, in terms of short term. Originally, we expected 3.9 million, however, we did get significant premiums paid into the deal. And you will see, there should be a sheet in front of everyone, two side of, one side shows the revenue bond issue that will address, the front side shows the general obligation issues. You can see the source and application of those particular funds. Two million coming from cash on hand, which, as Mark said, was grant from Dane County, and a net 263,475 in premium that allowed us to drop the issue size from 3.9 to actually That's the power amount. We do have new resolutions, but the only thing that changed is the number. So in any case, we are taking this particular issue to 2043. On the left-hand side toward the bottom, you'll see the general obligation refunding bonds. Keep in mind, these are refunding bonds, there's no new money in this issue. It's just a restructure of debt that we had on our books, and we're now going to pay it out over time from 2026 out to 2043. Yields at a 2.80 in year one, out to a 3.99 in 2043. The issue is callable at the city's discretion in 2034, which means we can get at any of those longer bonds, should we decide to, should the market improve past those points where it warrants a refinancing due to, for savings, or that somebody kind enough in the community drops a bunch of cash in her lap and says they'd like to have us pay down that green space. All of those and probably a few other ideas could come into play, but at least it gives us that flexibility to react to it. And again, that has to be built in at the time we sell the bonds, so that we know those particular bond bidders purchasers are aware that they could be called out of the portfolio. That all being said, we have a true interest cost at the date of closing of a 4.125%. Wasn't that long ago, we weren't getting 10-year paper at four and a half percent. So the market has improved, I think most of you know that. Certainly mortgage rates should be coming down, and gas prices are down, and hopefully we're going to see that equate to food prices coming down. Because my grocery bill's doubled, I know that. In any case, happy to answer any questions you might have relative to that particular, this particular issue.
Appreciate the optimism.
Yeah, you know, I try that pessimistic side of things, it doesn't work well for me. I get up in the morning, and I already feel bad.
Any questions for Jeff or Mark?
I have one.
Yes, Rick.
So at the top of this resolution, it says 3.1, 3.64 million, but in the first paragraph, it said purpose of refunding 3.9 million.
It's a purpose, yeah. Our purpose is to fund 3.9 million projects.
Then we're selling 3.6 million dollars?
Correct. We are, we are getting, if you take a look at my sources and uses on that first page.
Yeah.
Rick, you'll see that the difference is coming in a premium of 263,475 from the buyers. So we don't need to offer as much in terms of power.
Oh, I see.
Because we're getting a purchase price of over 3.9.
Got it.
In fact, just over, we're getting purchase price of 3,903,475.
Okay, so that difference is based on cash on hand?
Based primarily on the buyers willing to pay a premium over and above the face value of the security. So there were some, some of these particular bonds were sold at 113, which means they're paying for every thousand dollars, they're paying 130 more than they're going to get back when it matures. But it'll come in the form of a coupon and rate over time, but they're paying it in ahead of time. So we're using that money obviously to pare down our borrowing.
Okay.
Good question.
Other questions?
I'll move approval.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
And this is for the substitute resolution that Mark sent, the 3.6.
Yes, with the substitute number.
Right. And this being the amount that it is, I believe this is a roll call. Eileen, could you please call the roll?
Alder DePullo.
Aye.
Alder Kugel.
Aye.
Alder Bernstein.
Aye.
Alder Radamacher.
Aye.
Alder Holquist.
Aye.
Alder Wood.
Aye.
Takes us to item 2B, consideration of resolution 25-11-2847, authorizing issuance and sale of 1.55 million taxable general obligation refunding bonds, series 2025C, also put forth by the finance director. May we suspend the rolls, may I have a motion to suspend the rolls and take this out of order?
Motion to suspend the rolls and take this out of order.
Second.
And I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Go ahead, Mark, before we.
Yeah, so this, if you remember last time, this is a, this wasn't required to be refunded, but it was refunded for a TIF strategy, because TIF eight, which is where this debt is being paid out currently, is a donor district of TIF nine. So we kind of looked at strategies, how can we get the most money into TIF number nine? And so we looked at refinancing this. We have four years left of the donor district, 26, 27, 28, and 29, so there's zero principal payments in those years. So that's going to give us, I think, I can't remember, I don't have the number in front of me, more money into TIF number nine, because we actually have some large principal payments coming in due in TIF number nine, and this will help us make those payments. So this is more just a revenue, or a TIF strategy. This is all covered by TIF increment, does not affect the taxpayers, the property taxes. So I have to hand this over to Jeff.
Well said, Mark. Yes, that's correct. It is a TIF strategy. We obviously want to take advantage of our tax incremental districts and make sure that we are able to legally collect everything that's rightly coming to the city for projects that have been paid for. And it's also a timing issue, because without having any debt service in the years 2000, where we have these now, 2030 through 34, we couldn't legally say, you know, we need to collect, keep collecting these monies for debt service that we, that doesn't exist. And we would have been short in the previous three years, because these maturities were going to pay themselves out over that particular time. So it was a strategy to take advantage. We obviously know a lot more about our TIF districts today than we did 10 years ago. And so we had some options and callable features in that issue to allow us to do this. Basically, we just flip them over, and the cash flows will remain fairly steady until these are paid out. However, I'll be optimistic again, Mayor, and I'm doing so based on the numbers Mark has given me, so my optimism is rooted in some actual back there, but we will have enough revenues from the donor recipient to pay this out and possibly pay it out a year or two early, so we're in good shape. And again, I'll reiterate what Mark said, this is not new money, and this is not money coming from general fund tax levy. This is purely coming from the payment, and it has been from the payment of tax incremental revenues due to our improvements in those TIFs.
Any questions? Yes.
So I'm just looking at page 51 at the top, where it says, under the policy analysis statement, it talks about how the city borrowed 3 million dollars related to TIF number eight. My question is, the type of TIF agreements that we now negotiate, that we refer to as the pay-go, that type of agreement would not require the city to borrow upfront any longer?
Yeah, right.
So this is under the old type of TIF model?
It is, it isn't. This money of 3 million dollars is related to another TIF strategy. So this is actually for projects. This was not actually for developers' agreement. This was money used for projects within the half mile. It's actually projects that were in TIF number nine.
Okay.
So this is actually for actual projects, not developers' agreement. But you are, you are true. We do have, we do have some loans that we take out, were developers' agreements. This one actually was for some projects that was actually done.
Okay.
You're absolutely right in terms of your analysis. There are a couple different methods Alder used to use in terms of trying to enhance a particular district. Sometimes you're more aggressive, and a lot of times developers will say, "Listen, I don't want the pay-go, because you really need this project to be done, and I'm primarily the guy that's going to deliver it to you." So we end up negotiating based on a normal TIF scenario. However, when you're fortunate enough where you don't have to redevelop certain areas and you've got raw land, we can, we as a municipality can be a little more hard-nosed, if you will, in terms of saying, "Look, we'll offer you a pay-go," which means whatever development you put in is going to generate a TIF increment, and we'll deed half of that or a certain percentage of that back to you, so you can pay your costs of the improvements as opposed to us paying it.
Right.
So you're right, you understand the two.
Looks like we're both right, Mark.
Yeah. No, you're right. It's just this one was actually for a project.
Right, exactly.
But we do have, we do have developers' agreements that we paid up.
Yeah.
Gave them money upfront.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jeff or Mark on this one? If not, I'll take a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Do I have a second? Okay. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Kugel.
Aye.
Alder Bernstein.
Aye.
Alder Radamacher.
Aye.
Alder Holquist.
Aye.
Alder Wood.
Aye.
Alder DePullo.
Aye.
Thank you. Takes us to C, consideration of resolution 2511-2848, authorizing the issuance and sale of 4.6 million dollars water system and sewer system revenue bond series 2025D, also put forth by the finance director. May I have a motion to suspend the rolls and take this out of order?
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so this is the revenue water and sewer bonds, revenue bonds. We had two short-term notes, basically, in 2021, 2024. We basically set those schedules up at the time to be paid off in February of 2026. So right now, that payment's coming due, looking to get into a long-term note. And also, with the capital budget just being approved, we put into 2026 utility projects included in this number two. And a lot of it, I think, just so you know, we do the short-term notes, I kind of mentioned this at the finance, we don't just pay interest, we are paying principal interest at the same time. So it's kind of like we're in a long-term note, but we have to refinance here after like four or five years, depending on situation. So we are paying down, we're not just paying interest on those. And also, when we put them in the short-term notes, one of the strategies was, they're not subject to the revenue bond requirements, so we're able to stabilize our rates a little bit easier by doing it that way. It's kind of also a rates strategy. That's why we don't have to fluctuate our rates or keep increasing our rates when we do short-term notes.
Yeah, excellent, Mark. Mark's absolutely correct. It's a strategy Mark and I developed years ago in terms of moving us along with our enterprise fund and not charging users for a project that's not completed yet. So with a note anticipation note, as Mark said, we live within the constraints of the then-existing user rate system. We're only paying interest, because we're paying principal on other bonds that are outstanding. Don't misunderstand that we're not, we are amortizing principal debt of existing revenue bonds, which you don't see on this page. In fact, to the tune of over a half a million dollars annually. So instead of saying, okay, let's increase our debt service another 200, let's say 250,000, example, we have a 50% increase in need for the net revenues to make that debt service payment. So what we do is, we look at every couple of years, you're doing note anticipation notes for your enterprise improvements, and when we get to a size that is somewhat reasonable... And when we get to a size that is somewhat reasonable to go out to the market and warrants the market, keep in mind, this one's paying off a two thousand and twenty-one C, a two thousand and twenty-four B, it's now the end of two thousand and twenty-five. We've gotten down the road where there hasn't been pressure on our utility rates. So we've gotten the projects completed, we have improvements. It warrants us now as a utility, as an enterprise scenario, to start to recoup that, to get a rate of return in our utility, based on our investment, because think of it, it's asset, as you know. And we collect it based on the value of that asset after operation and maintenance. So here we are in the, in this time where we said, I said to Mark, when are you going to know about whether we're going to need any more money this year or next? I'd rather do it now with this issue, because we have to take these out, they're callable now, or they're due, actually, in the next couple of months. And so we waited until right now, because you finished your utility, your budget, we know the amount, we included it, made some changes, and now we have for you an issue of four point three million. And you see that in, we start paying off principal in two thousand twenty-eight. Keep in mind, we're paying principal in twenty-six and twenty-seven on existing debt. And we go up to a three sixty-four in year thirty-nine. So for those fourteen years, we're still under a TIC or two interest cost at the date of closing of a three ninety-six. Pretty impressive for a revenue bond. Even though, of course, your GOs are lower, which we would expect, they're also a general obligation pledged with a double A-plus rating. Utilities never, almost never, achieve an equal rating of the municipality's general obligation. You've got one where you can levy a tax without limit to pay your debt, or you've got a limited amount of revenue to pay your debt based on operation and maintenance. And I think you can see the difference in the credit there. Even though you as a city would never default, even if our rates, for whatever reason, dropped from a point where we, you know, we had to soften it or contribute from the general fund. We've never had to do that, and we never will. Any questions on this particular issue?
Any questions?
It also includes, by the way, it also includes new money for water utility projects, which you guys have decided to do. I know I'm preaching to the choir, you already know that.
Being the case, I'll be happy to take a motion.
I'll move approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Could the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Bernstein.
Aye.
Alder Rattamacher.
Aye.
Alder Homquist.
Aye.
Alder Wood.
Aye.
Alder DePulis.
Aye.
Excuse me, Alder Kugel.
Aye.
Right.
Mayor, if I may wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
I think we all know that's coming. We plan on closing this issue on the first of December. Bond attorneys normally like two weeks to get all the documents and stuff. Probably, they're not, basically telling me they're not working Thursday and Friday of next week. So I have resolution, have you already got them done?
Yes.
Never mind.
Never mind.
Thank you. I'm taking them back, because we're making the call tomorrow morning, and we have to deliver them actual hard copy, because they won't believe if I tell them that, yes, you had authorized resolution.
We wouldn't want you to have to drive back, Jeff.
I would myself. I'm going to have to anyway, Mayor, because that leads me into the next part. The closing documents are going to be coming. I think you saw that?
Yes.
So we're going to really kind of lay on you to do them on Wednesday?
Yep.
And when they're done?
On my calendar.
Mark can let me know, and I'll drive here and pick them up.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Drive carefully home.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, that takes us to item D, consideration of resolution twenty-five dash eleven dash twenty-eight forty-four, adopting the twenty twenty-six operating budget and establishing a tax levy. Mark, do you have any, beyond the amendments, do you have any updates from Cow? Are there any updates to?
No, no updates.
Any changes?
Other than email the four copies of the amendments and put them on your table.
So this will take the opportunity to go through the, the operating budget again is the same as it was when we just had the committee of the whole, and we're just going to go through the amendments that have been proposed. Mark's got the first one up here, sponsored by Alder Bernstein and Woods. Do you want to share anything, since you guys proposed it?
You up there?
Ryan's here, he can ask and answer a few questions. But this is just helping the library with its circulation. We talked about that last time. And this will hopefully stay within the levy limits and help the library reach its circulation, improve its circulation.
I would just add to that, that for two of the lines, I think it's the children's books and the adult books, it puts it back to what it was this year. And periodicals, AV, was, I think, thirteen thousand this year, so it puts it partway back. And I know, you know, last year in preparation, or after the referendum had passed, we had, we did increase all these, the lines. So just hate to see, take two steps forward and one step backward kind of thing.
How do we know that an increase in the number of books purchased equals an increase in circulation?
That's a good question, Mayor. I'm basing that really on looking at the higher circulation of the libraries in our area. Those libraries with a higher collection tend to have higher circulation. Now, that's not, that's not a fact for every single collection, because we actually have a smaller collection. I'd say we have one of the smallest collections in the area for a library of our size. And we do relatively well per capita for our circulation. But those libraries that have the highest circulation do have larger collections. It is a draw for the public to come to that library, especially, we find that a lot of patrons like browsing the collections. And when there are more quality materials on the shelf, then they will grab those and take it with them. They've shared, patrons have shared with me how much they enjoy browsing the shelves and our displays. And the more items we have, because when they go, we have to replace it with something, we do, until we basically are kind of charging out, you know, James Patterson, you know, wonderful author, but they've been around a while. So we try to, we try to put as many of the quote-unquote hot items as possible, which does require a higher collection budget. And to Alder Wood's point, with the referendum adding, or increasing the collection budget, I believe that was the first time the collection budget had been increased since my time as director in two thousand seventeen. So that collection budget had remained pretty stagnant for several years.
Although, wasn't there, didn't the, either the, in the years that I know, that we had to be, we were really tight, it wasn't the case that either the foundation or the friends of provided money for you to purchase them?
The Booked for Life Fund with the Library Foundation has been around, I believe, since like two thousand and ten to offer supplemental funding for the collections. That's true. And that has increased in small increments over time, just because it, you know, the rates, we get the, whatever the disbursement is every year, based on a fraction of whatever the principal was of those. So that has gone up. I guess, to be more accurate, I was speaking to the city funds that goes towards the collections, those have not increased in that time.
Right.
And isn't the size of the collection one of the factors that goes into the Dane County Library aid formula?
The size is a small factor, in terms of like also spending for the collections is a small factor. The biggest factors, of course, are the square footage of the library, which tends not to change and link, I should say, as it's linked to the like county rental rates. But then also the physical circulation of the items that I explained at the last meeting.
Right.
So all of that does tie into the formula. The collection size is also a factor for the county standards for libraries, which we are within that parameter.
Right.
Any other questions for Ryan? Or Doug, or Rick?
I move approval.
No, we're not approving anything tonight. This is just first read.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, the next one up is also related to the library, amendment number twenty-six dash oh two.
This is replacing some funds that had been cut for other higher priorities. But I think we want to replace that, because with the referendum, there was a, there was, one of the goals was to maintain city property. And so that's kind of reflecting that operational goal. And so we're just replacing a little bit of what was cut for other priorities within the library budget.
Do you want to say anything?
Yeah, it was ten thousand dollars last year, and I know they did do a substantial amount of work. So my concern is to cut it to zero this year. I'd rather see it more consistent and hopefully make sure that what they did, the work last, that they did last year or this, you know, this year, that we maintain that. And, you know, it takes a little bit of money to do that, so.
Brian?
Can we have a description of what this is? Because it looks like, over the course of years, there's been zero. There was a bump in two thousand twenty-three for ninety-six hundred. But then, last year, or so far this year, according to the book, and I know more than, more might have been spent. We've only spent, like, just shy of nine hundred dollars.
I'll have to look at that.
This was a...
It's one eleven.
What's that, one eleven?
Yeah.
Eight ninety-one was today, I got five thousand in there. That was an estimate. So this was always zero, why there's ninety-six? Hundred, two thousand twenty-three. It might have been something that was...
So if I can, if I can speak, I believe what, what the amount is for is for the outside services, which is essentially the landscaping of the library property. My understanding is, we did not have any dollars allocated for that up until last year, where Mayor O'Connor at that time allocated ten thousand dollars in the operating budget for that. In getting a contract this year, we have, I believe, spent close to, I want to say like six to sixty-five hundred for that, which was the annual contract that we had to do the services, which included also some trimming of trees, as well as just the cleaning up of all the landscaping for the library, at least, I want to say, three times throughout the year. And in, and again, looking at the priorities for library funding, I do agree that, you know, how the library is presented is important. I did have to cut it for priorities I deemed higher. But the amount that was put in there is to do what I project to be a one-time cleaning for the year, and then really trying to work with my volunteer groups, because that's who was doing it all this time. And those volunteer groups that really had a passion for the landscaping, we even had a couple master gardeners that were part of that. Whether they moved away, or just, you know, they put in years of work and they decided that was enough, and I don't blame them. I would have to kind of revive that volunteer group to do that. To be frank, I don't have staff time to allocate to do that kind of thing, nor the experience. As far as I'm aware, the city doesn't have staff time, going beyond the mowing and the, and the snow removal that's already done. So just trying to figure out how we can present the library, since it is on a major street in the, in the city of Manona, how we can present it, and, you know, keeping it in a relatively, you know, pleasant view. I think at the very least, one professional clean up a year, and then a strong volunteer group can help with that. Ideally, it would continue the funds that we had this year. Again, I just, I have the higher priorities that I decided the fund should go to.
This was a referendum thing that the former mayor put in. This was not, two thousand twenty-five was not a library committee number put in. This was just last year, when the mayor was going through her budget, added the ten thousand in there for those reasons. That's what that was added in there. That ninety-six from twenty-three is, I'll take a look at it, but I think that was something that we used bond balance for, that was outside. That's nothing related to...
Might have been the rock ball.
It might have been something like that.
Mark, can you tell me, do we have a similar line item for landscape improvements or maintenance for other buildings such as the senior center and community center, the pool, city hall?
There was a bunch of them that were put in. I don't know exactly, not all of them, but there were some. The former mayor, that was one of her big things. Before she left, she wanted, I know she put it in the parks, there's a bunch in the parks. She increased last year more in the community center maintenance and line items and outside services for those reasons. I might look at all of them. I don't, not every one of them was increased, but I know the parks for sure, this one, library. I don't know the dollar amounts, remember, community center, where, I don't remember if the building, just a general building was or not.
I recall that there was any landscaping per se.
There was already landscaping in those original ones, like the building already had landscaping numbers.
Right, right, but I mean, like, in the operating budget now, for each one of those, I don't know that there's a line item...
It's under outside services. They don't, haven't been broken out. You'd have to kind of dig into each one of them.
So maybe the larger question I have is, if we're hiring outside contracting service for landscape cleanup and maintenance, above and beyond what our city staff are doing, we should probably do a one budgeted item that could get allocated to different departments to do what is the service that we need done at all of the buildings? Rather than the library going out to get a contract, and the senior center, and someone else, like, one project. They do a lot of buildings.
Has that been, has that been tried in the past?
I would, I say, I agree. I think if you talk to the three or four department heads, they would all have different opinions on what they think the priority is, and I think that's where it gets to be the issue. Like Jake will think something's more a priority than the library. I mean, I think that's where somebody would have to step in and work all that out.
But if it's around presentation of city properties,
Right.
maybe that's a city administrator call, on what's important of maintenance level for building.
As long as you don't yell at me, Alder, for what I pick.
No, well, I mean, meaning like, if the library's going to have one standard of what the landscaping maintenance is, that same standard should be across the city. And like, I don't want to turn down a amendment just to turn it down, but at the same time, it's like, hang on, are we doing this everywhere?
Right.
Or not?
Ryan, currently, if this, does this have, do they call it Spider Gate? Is that, was that a motivating factor with Mayor O'Connor, in terms of all the webs outside?
I've received comments regarding the spider web situation. You know, the library respects our arachnid friends, but I do understand some people did not like that. But I think beyond that, you know, that is a factor of it. And I know it's probably easier to hear the comments here, because it is a more centralized source, where we have like, you know, last year we had over a hundred and twenty thousand visits, so that's a lot of people to see like one space, rather than spread out throughout the entire city. But, you know, I think too, just looking at the grounds at that time, things were just looking a little bit in disarray, because that was really when that volunteer group was kind of, the time that they could dedicate to that was really going down. And so over time, it just was building up. So we've kind of gotten back to a good standard. And I know, you know, that the city department heads have worked on other things and trying to do like a city-wide contract, because we do see savings there. And I guess I, as one department head, I'll speak for me, that definitely worth looking into, as the library being part of that. For this, this, for this budget, I guess I was just trying to say, like, how can we keep the library going to at least the bare minimum standard of how we're presenting to the public?
I guess, could we maybe, before the next meeting, get a total of what we spend on
Sure.
that, this kind of item at all the city buildings?
Yes, we can get that.
How, I guess, also, I mean, do we have separate contracts with all those, or?
I'd have to look into, I think everybody has something a little different, so.
Right.
Because yours was originally like volunteers at one time.
Right.
This was brand new.
I frankly don't know if the community center and senior center have gone that way as well, where volunteers are doing it or not. I just don't know.
We could, we can follow up on that.
And I would, I would also say, it seems like, I mean, we've just, we keep talking about the spiders. That's one, what, that's one type of outside contract? But you were also talking about the volunteers around your gardens?
Yes.
And your land, and, I mean, I know that Jake takes care of all the... And, and, I mean, I know that Jake takes care of all the parks, including the grass that's around the community center and the flowers that are in front of the community center. He doesn't outside contract those, and it just seems like, I mean, the amount of lawn that you have is pretty tiny.
It's not the lawn, it's the plantings.
Right.
That, I think, was, I mean, Chris mows the lawn.
Right. The, the, the contract is just for, for the grounds around the library.
Right.
And, you know, we, it honestly would have been higher in terms of the cost, but our Public Works was able to help us out tremendously with like tree removal. So we had a couple of trees that we had to take down. Normally would have contracted with the, the company that we use for landscaping, but Public Works was able to help us out, which was, which really helped us.
Right. My impression, Mayor, is these are, these are, it's more specialty project kind of things, like I said, it's, it's not just saying it's not just flowers. Right, it's right, exactly. That's, that was a perfect example. These are more, you know, our maintenance guys are, are doing the, the regular, the mowing, that sort of stuff gets taken care of. But I do think that some of the specialty planting areas that need a little extra care, it's not just, these are, you know, if they're prairie plants, or something in there that's, that you can't just let them go, you've got to actually do some active maintenance work on them. That's always the, the, the rub about putting those types of things in, is that it's not just a mow and, mow it and leave it kind of thing. It's, you've got to take some care towards those things. And if they're not taken care of, they can cause even extra maintenance along the way. So I think the plant, some of the special plantings is an example, the pest control is an example. You know, I do think our staff does kind of do, take care of a lot of it, because even some probably would argue that, you know, looking at some of the medians in the city is another area that we were, you know, depending on Public Works, you know, certainly would talk to Director Stefani about what he would look for on, so we probably some, some assistance in taking care of some of those areas, even do beyond just the ones that we don't just, just mow, those we can handle, but.
Right, well, I guess, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm just echoing what Brian was saying in terms of, doesn't it make sense to coordinate, to have the, a, a standard that we want to maintain our buildings at, whether it's the gardens or the lawns, or the, or the spiders?
And absolutely, as, as long as we understand that, the, the standard may be universal, but the services currently needed at each facility, they said, we didn't need spiders at anybody else. Ryan was just lucky. Yeah, so again, certainly, again, having a, a general budget.
It's actually not true. Jake has a pest control contract for all of the shelters, and he uses it. And I actually suggested to Ryan that he talked to Jake about who he uses, because there are several other people that have gotten a recommendation from Jake about who, who he uses, because there's, and they're not only good, but he's found them to be less expensive than other ones. And so, so I know he does actually.
And to, absolutely, and, and we do look for those opportunities. Staff is, this is not, it's not the wild, wild west where we have four department heads just going on doing anything if they want to. We are, I mean, that need just comes up at staff meeting.
Right.
Several times a year, in terms of coordinating if somebody's doing something work, is there anybody else who needs it? So we, you know, we do take an effort on that, but certainly something we can, we can work with Mark, and we'll pull, pull the data on that for sure.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions on this one? Uh, next one up is this, uh, number 2603, and this relates to AI training and education.
Yeah, so after the discussions that we had in the committee, the whole, well, I thought the next, trying to figure out what our next step is, and just maybe to continue the conversation, was to propose this amendment to put in a little bit of money for AI training and education for staff, you know, which might, is not going to go very far, so maybe that gets training for one person. But I guess at the last meeting, I, I was a little disappointed that it seemed like there was a lot of, there was more fear than seeing the opportunities that AI presents. And definitely, there's a reason to be fearful, or, you know, to be cautious about it, but I think there's a lot of potential benefits from it. And plus, it's here, and I think people are going to be using it, so we, you know, a little bit of money to, to start getting up to speed on it.
So, and you feel like we would need more money than what is already allocated for professional development for every single department? Because every department has a professional development lying on it.
No, this is just for the information technology departments, what it's supposed to be for, for IT, IT budget.
So, but, what I'm saying, you feel like it needs to be supplemented over and above what every department already has for professional development, in order for them to take advantage of any kind of AI training?
I guess I'm still not, I mean, my intent here was to give some money to the, probably to Leah or whoever she wanted, thought would make best use of it in the, in information technology, you know, department.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it might, yeah, I think it's, at some point, and maybe it won't necessarily need to be separate money, but as part of training, I think, how to deal with AI and how to take advantage of it and what to watch for, I think.
Yeah, I just didn't understand that, because you said you weren't sure who it would go to, so I thought you were thinking of it more globally, of who do we spend, send for staff, as opposed to just Leah's department.
Right, yeah.
And I was just indicating that every department has professional development. Patrick?
Right. As a co-sponsor, I just wanted to state that, yeah, I think it is important. It's coming, and it would be useful for us to have someone who was a subject matter expert on AI at the city, or at least who's training to be that ombudsman, so to speak. The, and I, the intention is to dedicate X amount to, to training and taking care of that specific subject. So, yeah.
Any other questions?
Just a quick comment on, on other training budgets, Mayor, for the most part, most departments have a very specific list of training that they've identified for their budget. So they're really probably, in most cases, there wouldn't be the ability to add on or absorb something without removing something else in those, in those training budgets, for the most part. There are a couple ones that have, I think, a little bit more flexibility on them, but.
Okay.
One thing, just a little thing, I don't think Leah really has a professional development budget either.
Right.
She's lumped in with our executive one.
Yeah.
Which we have, for the mayor, myself and her, we have like two conferences. It's like, it, yeah, so, so this, I think this would actually go a long way to be, to be able to make that happen, because it certainly could not be absorbed by our existing budget at this point.
Okay. Uh, any other comments on this one? Uh, this is, then takes us to the next one, which is 2604, relating to debt. Alder Wood, do you want to?
Yep. So, I mentioned this before, this is the, we, we've done this type of motion fairly often, where if you look, actually, if you just look on page four, I think it is, or page three of the budget, in the box, it shows the, the amount that were over the 20%, which is 640,000. And then if you look on page five, it shows what the debt service increase would be under the current proposed budget. So basically, it would, this, the effect of this amendment would be to take that debt service increase number down to zero, and then we'd have, I guess, a, well, it'd be a very small total increase. So that's how I picked the specific number, that's a little bit stronger than we've done in the past, not 339,000, but more 200-ish, maybe, about.
Mark, where would that put us in terms of the?
I'd probably put down like 23%.
23%?
Yeah. I was talking to Doug too about this, just for everybody in general, my number might be a little conservative too, so it's probably a little bit above the, sorry. The 27%, I know, just two chiefs here looking at their budgets, you know, they had some staffing issues where people have left. So those numbers are going to come a lot better too. So that number, in the end, will still be about 23, 24% in the very end, just because of the, with the referendum, and everybody I think doing extremely well, and some, you know, a lot of times if you replace somebody, it takes a little bit longer, so there is some savings there. So I think, probably be 23, 24% in the very end, so.
So you're saying that line where it says estimated fund balance 123125?
I could probably have another 50, 60,000, probably.
Since you.
Look at, just look at the numbers from today.
Yeah.
So I think I, after these amendments, I was looking at that, that amendment, I think it will be okay, as far as that portion of it. The reason why we put it in there, didn't use the fund balance, originally was, I think we talked about last time, is we used a lot last year, so we cut, you know, in the, to offset the levies, or just kind of building that back up again, and that was the thought process, instead of using the fund balance.
Yeah.
So by taking this full amount, and if it takes us down to 24%, it seems to me when we did the capital budget, one of the things that we talked about was the importance of having a sufficient reserve, that if something that we didn't fund, did we not, breaks down, or we have a problem, or whatever, we would have resources available to be able to cover it, right?
We'd have about 500,000.
Right. So let me just finish that thought. So that was one thing that I was thinking about, and then the other thing that I was thinking about was the hope that we might find an avenue beyond 29 before having to go to another referendum, which is something that I know that Mark has talked about a little bit.
Continency number, that's the big number. You start touching that, reducing that number down is where you're going to run into a lot of problems with the future years. And I think we stayed on course with that.
Okay. So, so you don't think that taking it down like this would have any impact on whether we can extend beyond 29?
No, that, no, that won't have that effect. It's the contingency number is the big number.
Okay.
It's gonna, more of the fund balance number would be, if eventually you won't have as much money to transfer in the future years to debt service, and the debt service will go up a little bit. We have the, next year, we'll have that 300,000 to, to make up for next year. That's such a, which is one-time cost.
Yeah, I did, I mean, just sort of philosophically, I always feel like, once we get the fund balance, you know, well above our policy number, and at the same time, we're raising taxes for the debt service, and we're holding on to money from people that we already taxed them for, that if we can, if it makes fiscal good policy, that we should use it to, you know, so that we don't have to raise taxes as much.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, our portion would be, if you, if you do that, the debt service is basically flat, you're looking at about a $10 increase, $15 increase to the overall tax bill, for our portion. But the school district is going up, you know, like we talked about.
Right.
Teresa?
So, so Alder Wood, I hear you, I think what you're saying is, we have an obligation to pay down our debt when we're able to pay down our debt, right? So, so $300,000 toward debt payment, and what the interest rate on that debt is what?
You're not really paying the debt.
Right.
I mean, you are paying the debt, but you're really reducing the property tax number.
Yeah, this isn't paying down, this isn't extra money paying on the principal of debt. This is substituting this money, the cash, extra cash that we have on hand, instead of raising the levy on debt service.
Okay.
For, you know.
So putting this money to use, rather than holding on to it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions on this one?
But where would we put it to use? What, I, what does that mean? I mean, we're not.
Basically, it's transferring, it's giving it back to the taxpayers.
It's just instead of the.
Okay, so you're reducing taxpayer burden by, what'd you say, like $10 per person or whatever?
No, no, probably about $60.
Yeah.
Okay.
It reduces it from whatever, what'd we say, 74 or something?
Got it, okay.
To 10.
That, that's where the $10 figure came in, okay.
Any other questions on this one? Okay. That takes us, again, well, this will be on the next meeting, you have, which means you have two weeks to ask more questions, choir of staff, you know, and.
Just one quick thing, there's going to be a short turnaround for the next meeting because of Thanksgiving, so if you want something to go in the packet, other than these four amendments, if you give them to, I think the packs is going to go out Tuesday, I think Leah's gone for Wednesday, so.
The end of this week would be best.
Yeah, or Monday of next week.
Okay.
That takes us to the grappler. Uh, item number E, consideration of resolution 25-11-2845, approval of amendment to the police department vehicle pursuit policy to include the grappler device as approved pursuit intervention tool brought forth by the public safety committee. Sorry, I can't help it every time I see grappler, I have to.
It's like a Marvel comic tool or something.
Yeah.
Chief, welcome.
Good evening. The day has come for me to talk about the grappler formally. I'm joined by Lieutenant Knott Greiner, our operations lieutenant, and Assistant Chief Doeman, who's joining us online. So your entire police management team is here to talk about the grappler. This is a formal request to add the grappler device to your police department's pursuit policy. It's one of the many policies, as you know, in which the council has full control over, into adding even apostrophe to a word. So I'm coming before you, at the recommendation of the public safety committee, to add language which, which authorizes the, the use of the device. The goal here, and I'll go over what it is, and we, there's a little bit of show and tell via YouTube that administrators, that Schulte is going to assist me with, but I, I just want to go over the goal of, of this device. It's, it's fairly simple, if you think about it. It's a, it's a tool that's used to provide the safest mechanism, if possible, to end the pursuit or to prevent the pursuit. We understand, as you all do, that pursuits really are dangerous and have risks involved, both to the public, officers, and the suspects in which the police department pursues. As you very, very well know, we are not immune to vehicle pursuits here in Manona. We, as I mentioned before, we have our somewhat unique set of challenges in our geography, in that we're surrounded on all sides but the lake by the second largest city in the state. The last several years, based on what I would call area-wide trends, we've seen that some individuals are still just determined to elude police, although we are seeing that we are having a deterrent factor in, based on our data. I, I would love to attribute that to a deterrent factor and a public information aspect of what your police department does, and to try to convince and encourage folks who may be determined to flee from police. We've seen cases in which they've not, and they've stopped for police. We have traditional pursuit intervention techniques that are already in existence within our police pursuit policy, that are trained techniques. This would be adding another one, which would, we would have to train as well. One of the techniques we use, just as an example, is the precision immobilization technique, that's a handful. The state calls it a pursuit intervention technique, but it is what you think of in which contact is made with another vehicle, and there is a rather controlled spin of the vehicle, which immobilizes the suspect vehicle. I say rather controlled, because it's not a perfect science, right? That, your police department has already authorized and is equipped now to, to utilize, and we just recently, in the past couple of weeks, did our first pursuit, or pit pursuit intervention technique of a vehicle that safely ended the pursuit. This device would allow, would provide the police department with another option so that that type of vehicle contact isn't necessarily required. Or if it's required and unsuccessful, it gives another tool for your police department to use. But why the grappler and what is it? So the grappler is a rear axle entanglement device. I had to say that slow. It's a real rear axle entanglement device that safely immobilizes a fleeing vehicle by capturing the back tire. It's used by hundreds of agencies across the country and it's in twenty-nine states. Most recent high-profile, what I would consider viral deployments, for some of you who have access to things like Facebook, Instagram, or TikTok. There are a couple of high-profile cases of successful deployments of the grappler devices. We're gonna show a couple of these in a minute that are from right here in the Midwest. There are none actually deployed in the state of Wisconsin, oddly enough. We haven't been able to determine exactly why that is. Attorney Cole is not here, but we did, in fact, at the request of an alder, did, in fact, do some research, legal research into our authorization of implementation of that device, should this council authorize it. And there are no legal barriers as to why we wouldn't be able to implement that device.
Jake, probably, part of that was it also does not increase the city's liability over what it actually is now, according to the city attorney.
Correct. If y'all heard that. Does not actually increase the city's liability, the implementation of that device. So, you know, this device itself, it's proven to end pursuits quicker and safer. These are the things that I knew about when I became chief. I came, as you recall, as the captain of traffic from the second largest city in the state. So traffic was my forte and reviewing pursuits and how to make those safer, et cetera. In my old job at Madison. And so I'd already known about the grappler device, but it was something that my prior agency really wasn't considering. And when I came on board here, obviously trying to get my feet wet, trying to get acclimated with my new lovely community that I work for, it wasn't something that I frankly thought that the city would want to consider until we started really taking a better look at pursuits, how regularly this agency was engaged with them and how we could effectively make them safer, as dangerous as they are, how we could make it safer for all. So really that is when, and some prompting by some of you on this council, which I do appreciate, and really giving this a really heavy look into implementing, potential for implementing the grappler here. The grappler has proven to reduce crashes and injuries. And if you haven't seen how these devices are deployed, we'll show you examples here soon. But in reducing crashes and injuries, we also preserve the safety and lives of the officers, the general public, and the suspects at hand. But unlike the PIT maneuvers, the grapplers can be deployed at lower risk levels. You have greater control of the suspect vehicle that you're pursuing. And it frankly just minimizes the unpredictability and crash potential, right? When you are actually tethered to the vehicle and slowing that vehicle down. That's in essence what it does. And so this is about really prevention, just as much as it is about intervention. The grappler device often deters suspects, as I mentioned before, and it's proven in the agencies that we've talked to, it's deterred suspects from fleeing once they see or they acknowledge that a police department has equipped their vehicle with the grappler device. And we've seen that in Eagan, Minnesota, which will play here soon, and other areas. We've contacted just roughly twelve agencies throughout the country, mainly focusing on the Midwest, who use, actively use, the grappler device. The goal is to get any feedback, yea or nay, good or bad, and all of which have been overwhelmingly positive on the use of the grappler device. Why this hasn't caught on sooner or more, I think price has something to do with it. These are not the most cheap devices, but I would argue is that you're investing in safety. You're investing in another tool for your police department to preserve life and to do our job more efficiently and more safely. So I've got some video demonstrations that the city administrator is gonna queue up for me. We've rehearsed this, sort of. I'm gonna show two press releases, two short clips of press releases from agencies that use the grappler. These are real-world deployments that show how controlled and safe the outcomes are. I think the first queued up is, yep, it's Eagan, Minnesota, and then the second one is Livonia, Minnesota. We're not sure if the audio will work, so there's closed captioning and I'll try to talk through some of this. And we are gonna have a little lag, but that's okay. I think if you move the mic, Neil?
Hollywood loves police chases.
We do not.
They're not gonna catch us. We're on a mission from God.
But in real life.
More than a half a dozen units on his tail here.
That can be deadly and dangerous. Eagan Police has a new tool to stop a chase. It's called the grappler, and here's how it works.
The device extends a tethered net from the front of the squad car that will snare the rear vehicle, or rear tire of the vehicle, which then gets that vehicle stopped.
Sergeant Rich Evans tells me the department is the first in the state to use the grappler. They have the device mounted on two squad cars. How much does this grappler cost?
Each grappler costs about five thousand to buy, install it, and get it set up on the car. Once it's installed, each net is about four hundred dollars.
So far this year, Eagan Police has had nine pursuits. All of last year, they had twenty-three. Currently, the department uses a variety of ways to stop a fleeing vehicle, including ramming, spike strips, and PIT maneuvers. Grappler will be added to the pursuit policy. How often would you have used this in some of those previous pursuits?
I would say many of those, and it would have probably stopped them sooner and more effectively and been safer to use it that fast. We can use it as a preemptive measure where you can actually grapple a vehicle before the pursuit even ends.
This is the net that will wrap around the suspect's tires.
Officer Aaron Mockmanis will use the grappler.
I didn't know what it was, and so when it was explained to me, I was very skeptical. And then during training, we tried it a few times and it worked really well, and I liked it. This is a good option to preemptively stop a pursuit or intervene before it gets too dangerous.
Jake and Elwood, the Blues Brothers better be careful driving through Eagan. As you heard, they have two of these devices now. If all goes well, they may add more in the future.
Okay, while the city administrator queues the next one, please. Just to review, Eagan, Minnesota, if you're not familiar, suburb of St. Paul. They, I think, are very similar in that their pursuit policy might be different than their counterparts in St. Paul.
Can we address the echo?
It's challenging. It's either no volume or it's the echo. So I'm happy to answer any questions about that.
No, that's fine.
Yeah. So we've tried to find some suburban communities that utilize the grappler device, get their take on it. There's, the press is, it's challenging because either you go Entertainment Tonight level press, right? Which provides a different take on this device. It's more glamour, it's more sort of, what we don't like is all the hype, right, about pursuits. We're actually trying to deter them. And so I tried to be very particular on sort of certain media and press coverage that just gives the facts of what this device is. Ignore the Blues Brothers reference in that other press release. And this next one is from Livonia, which is a suburb of Detroit, Michigan. This is the one where you probably have seen some TikTok or social media clips on. It's the deployment of a grappler device, and it's what happens when a lot of people ask, well, what if the person just tries to get away once you've grappled onto it and you've stopped it? And this is a prime example of sort of the, the outcome was still preferred, but it was unexpected in that the car could not continue to evade or elude police. But what you see here is that it tore out the rear axle. The owner in this clip I'll talk over is actually saying, he's the engineer, the designer of the grappler device. He's actually never seen that happen before. It's never happened in testing, et cetera. No injuries as a result of that, but obviously there was damage to the getaway vehicle when they were trying to continue to elude. Now, think about it. We, the persons that we've taken into custody in pursuits have been homicide suspects, attempted homicide suspects, drive-by shooting suspects, some very dangerous people, fourth-defense drunk drivers that, in my opinion, were we not to intervene, likely would have killed somebody. You obviously know about the toll truck incident. It's, again, it's a device that gives us another tool on the belt to help safely end a pursuit. And so, yes, we don't want to see the rear axles torn off of cars, right? That's not our goal here. But it just shows the power of this device, and when implemented and used properly, that it does, at the end of the day, safely stop a vehicle. Nobody was injured in this case. So that's why I wanted to show that. Do you have any questions on this? Either of those press, those releases, those video releases, and then I've got a few more talking points.
I do have a question about the back of the car being yanked off. I mean, given that there's a fair number of your pursuits that are stolen vehicles. I mean, obviously, it's one thing if somebody is eluding you guys or is taken off in their own vehicle because of some other crime. But if it's a stolen vehicle and it's a car that otherwise would be returned in normal shape to whoever it was stolen from, what happens if the thing gets ripped apart?
Most of the stolen cars are spiked anyway, be it from the city of Madison or other jurisdictions that are laying down spike strips to try to deflate the tires to slow these cars down.
Right, right.
The suspects in those ride on rims. And guess what your police department is doing behind the vehicle? They're following it while it's running on rims.
Oh, yeah.
Until they can stop.
Right.
Or we, the most recent one is we performed a PIT maneuver on it at slow speeds. But by that time, Mary, we were in Janesville. Right? On, watching it on rims until we could strategically get in place. The grappler device would have stopped that in the county, and we would not have had to watch it. So the suspects are causing the damage to their car by way of our current methods that police departments all over the county are using. Madison uses more tire deflation devices than we do. They don't pursue, but they potentially, and we believe that they've deployed more tire deflation devices than we do. Did you, were you chiming in?
No, I would just say most of the time, the car's in pretty bad shape already from the people who are driving the stolen autos that probably don't want it back anyways and be in insurance.
Okay. It's helpful to know. I just figured that the spike strips were replacing four tires most of the time as opposed to-
It is not the tire, it is, Mary, it is, the cars are on rims that completely mess up the axles, the, you name it. They're, by the time we, it safely stops the pursuit, it doesn't preserve the car.
Yeah.
But I get the question. I mean, the goal is, but what captures us and why we continue to engage in that pursuit, in those pursuits, it's not necessarily just for the mere fact of the stolen car. It is how the driver is operating. Or what we believe the driver may have also been involved in, that may not make it to press release because it isn't our shooting, for example. But there are more circumstances than purely stolen car. Are there some because the conditions are, there's nobody out, it's two o'clock on a Sunday, they're heading down the county road, the speeds are reasonable, the conditions are reasonable. That's within policy for the officers to continue to make those decisions and to evaluate as the pursuit's going on. And it's challenging, and I think because your department unfortunately gets into pursuits as much as we do, they've become really good at making those judgment calls. And you're looking at two people that sit and literally watch through from start to finish each pursuit to make sure, number one, they're within policy, good decisions are being made, and they need things that we can change better to be, change differently to be better. And so far, we've, the officers are using good judgment out there. And I continue, I believe that they'll continue to do so.
Patrick?
I watched the chief from Eagan, Minnesota, talk about the reduction in pursuits from the previous year to this year, to the current year that he's talking about. You had conversations with the police chief from Eagan?
Not directly.
No, not directly. But we've had a reduction too, right?
We have.
From twenty-four to twenty-five. And would you say, in your opinion, that part of the reduction is not so much that there's less crime, but there's definitely some effect based upon what we do in Manona, what the department does in Manona, and that reverates throughout the community, and that's having an impact as well? So something like this, in your opinion, would, you know, have a secondary benefit of?
Deterrence.
Deterrence, yeah.
Yeah, two things have happened. Number one, we have good working relationship with our partners at the Dane County Sheriff's Office, and several of them are jailers in the Dane County Jail who listen and converse with inmates, I'm sorry, residents in the Dane County Jail, and give us intelligence back with respect to some of the conversations that are being had. We've also had direct conversations with suspects who literally, and I've mentioned this before, and since then, since I've mentioned it, we continue to have that feedback that, oh, I should have known or I should have stopped, you know? They've recognized that it was Manona when we came in contact with them. And some of them, your chief himself was in a pursuit, was it last year, I think it was, last year, two years? Where the person realized it was the Manona police, and she told me she stopped because she realized it was the Manona police department. That's what we want. We want people to stop, but it's somewhat frustrating that that isn't sort of countywide.
Right.
Because we do get sort of the residual effects of persons committing crimes in other communities, such as our biggest neighbor. And to your point, Alder, I believe that the significant amount of pursuits, if we were equipped and that vehicle was in the pursuit, we would have likely ended sooner, or many of them wouldn't have even been pursued because we would have preemptively engaged the device, knowing that the person has fled twice, knowing that the person is a suspect in the shooting. We had all reasonable suspicion and probable cause to stop said vehicle, reasonable suspicion to believe that they're involved, and probable cause to stop the vehicle, that we would have deployed the device and stopped them before they could get thirty feet, which is the extension of the grappler strap.
First, I can verify what you're saying in terms of the deterrent effect, because we did have somebody come before License Review Committee. Part of his, he was explaining, you know, when he got stopped by the Manona police and why, et cetera. And he did say, oh, I saw it was you guys, so I stopped. Anyway, so that, yeah, that was like, wow, that's a real thing. That's-
It is. It's that, if I may.
Yep.
It's that interesting fine line for me, because we don't want to create fear, right? We certainly, and everything I say, I try to, and I can, I want to play these body cams, and I have released them to the press and the media, and I respect their role in society, right? But I want to play all the feel-good stuff that happens with these violent, dangerous individuals when they are finally captured and they interact with your police department, who are the most respectful persons. And I even have said to them, I hope that if I find myself in that same situation, I can be that calm and professional and respectful after going a hundred and ten miles an hour and watching somebody nearly kill people in the process, and say to them, you're under arrest, it's Manona police, are you okay? Do you need an ambulance? It's okay now, it's over. You can, you're okay, right? To the suspect that endangered how many lives, right? That's what you want in your police department, and that's a police department you have. And it's okay that folks know that we hold people accountable. So that's why my press releases are kind of like, don't do it here, but if you do, you'll get caught and you'll be treated with respect. I think that's okay, and that's that balance that we're trying to strike.
Right. Do we know how they perform in snow and ice conditions?
Yeah, so these are deployed by Michigan, and in Michigan, and Livonia is in Michigan. And so my understanding is that there's a reason that we can equip them on our interceptors, which are our explorers. Two reasons. Number one, those are on a unibody chassis platform, and so it's not like a truck. The F-150 is the only thing currently we have in fleet that we can equip the grappler device. The truck chassis and the weight, the weight factor. Yeah, I mean, you're in essence being an anchor to a moving vehicle. And that's part of the training and the considerations when you deploy it, what type of vehicle you're deploying it on. And so there may be a snowy day condition where it's, that's not a favorable factor to deploy the grappler. The same would apply for the PIT maneuver. There may be weather conditions that it's not favorable to- There may be weather conditions that it's, it's not favorable to deploy. Um, but in terms of durability and how it holds up, sort of day-to-day with salt, corrosion, et cetera, uh, we've been told it's been treated, very similar to our push bumpers that we currently equip, uh, and it's an all-weather device. So the arms will go down, it'll go up, yeah.
I mean, it certainly, just from the little I've read about the, the pit maneuver, this certainly seems a lot safer for everybody involved and more predictable.
I one hundred percent agree.
It's more of a controllable step.
Right. We are equipped and trained, um, and had several, several reps on the range of, you know, we're all taught and, and drivers had to, to keep distance away from another vehicle, to not draw in close and certainly don't touch another vehicle with your vehicle. That's something we had to unlearn to do, uh, in professional driving at pit school. Um, but we did way more reps of just, what, feathering, right? Light feathering. Our instructor, it's like a therapist, light feathering, light feathering. Um, we did that, what, six of the eight hours of the day? Um, and spent the last couple hours of actually doing the sort of contact, push, spin out. Um, so it, it took a while to, to learn that. Um, it's going to take some time to, to learn the distance of, of the device, but we've already had the training to get close, and we already have the mechanics of, of how this is going to work. Because we've done it, we've repped it, and we've since had one deployment, so.
I was going to say, does grappler send a trainer with, with a device? Because where else would you train, right?
Yeah, I mean, with the purchase price, you got two options. We can either send an officer down for training, which is seven hundred bucks or five hundred bucks, and then, uh, five hundred bucks would be for them, or seven hundred bucks would be for them to come here to us and train us. Um, but the alternative is to send an officer to go get trained. Um, if we go give that, then if other agencies in the area start getting grapplers, you know, we could be that lead agency, since we'd be the first one in the state, and help train other agencies as well.
And we...
Can you charge to train other agencies?
You, you can, and I'll tell you, there's likely, I don't know if we can get how many viewers are watching, but, uh, several of my colleagues are interested to see where this goes, um, and they're paying attention. And, uh, I've already gotten a, if this, it's your call, and I respect that, but I've already gotten a, there's, there's interest. Uh, should, should this be authorized, and then we do have a train the trainer, uh, one of our staff members who's a, will be a trainer potentially, um, to put on training, not only to your members of the department, but, uh, elsewhere. And yes, we would likely charge a fee for that.
Maybe they could just stay in... Uh, two things. One is, I like to think that if, you know, people are commenting, oh, it's the Manona police, I should probably stop. It's not just because of fear. It's also because they recognize you as fair and professional in the work that you do. Um, uh, and second, could you please let folks know how your intention in terms of how you're going to fund this?
Yes, and, and that's a point here, um, but then my talking points, Mayor, so let me get to it.
Okay.
Um, all right. So the initial implementation, we're not asking for additional funding. Um, we, there's already allotment in our, um, asset forfeiture funds that we've talked about here before in terms, well, actually, no, at Finance Committee, we didn't talk about it in front of the whole council yet, um, in terms of potentially bidding on a, on a vehicle. Um, and we also have, uh, allocated training funds. We'll see what you all approve through the operating budget, but we anticipate that, uh, we'll at least have some training funds in which to, uh, provide, uh, towards this. But we have only one vehicle that we can equip right now, which is the F-150 that's in the fleet. So we're looking at one device for one vehicle, but training multiple officers, not an entire crew, because not our entire crew drives the F-150, um, so we'll be selected who we assign to, uh, that training. So, um, we do have asset forfeiture funds that are available. We do have some funds within our, our equipment line item, uh, if not utilized for other priorities, that, uh, we certainly will use to, uh, equip the vehicle if need be.
Did you have a, um, yeah, Brian?
I'm no expert in vehicles, but in the video, it appeared as if one of those vehicles that was deploying the grappler was not a truck. It looked closer to our SUV.
So the vehicles that are, that, um, you can currently deploy, there's only one grappler device, um, that's made. Um, and the vehicle list is a Ford Expedition, a Ford F-150, a Chevy Tahoe, and a Chevy Silverado. So you saw the SUV versions of the trucks. So the Tahos, which we don't have, much bigger vehicle, but it's on the truck chassis, uh, either the F-150 platform, that'd be the Expedition, or the, uh, the, um, Tahoe is on the Chevy Silverado platform, truck, truck platform. So the, the purpose is the size and then the truck chassis.
Okay.
Because that's what the device bolts on to.
And then a, a small follow-up question, would it be that someone would be assigned to the F-150 for each shift then?
We, currently, right now, we have a couple officers that are assigned to F-150. If, if implemented and installed, we would make sure that there's optimal coverage. Um, we would look at our data to see where, when our pursuits are, which are later in the evenings and overnights. So that's likely where it would be deployed.
Perfect, thanks. Uh, it might be a question for the fire chief. Can we mount them on the ambulances too?
Oh, no.
Preemptively deployed.
Or would they be so, can you imagine, although it's a five thousand dollar item, I'm thinking, can you imagine a scenario where it would alter the vehicles we would purchase?
Yeah, so, you know, currently, right now, we're, as you know, uh, as approved in the capital budget, we're looking at an all-electric or hybrid vehicle. The all-electric vehicle option that's available to us is the Ford F-150 Lightning. It's a plug-in F-150 pickup truck, um, and so there's consideration for that to be equipped as well. Um, if we see great success in this, folks, um, I'm going to tell you about that great success, and you may hear me coming to you and say, well, uh, grappler is still only authorized and available to be deployed on these types of vehicles. Is there any consideration for this council to authorize the purchase of, you know, when I come to you with, with, uh, new vehicle purchases, I may say a Tahoe, I may say a Silverado or a pickup truck instead of an all-electric vehicle. If they make that powertrain for that vehicle, you're going to see me, with my dedication on sustainability, ask for that. But if not, I'm, I'm, I might ask for the naturally aspirated powertrain, um, traditionally powertrain vehicle that, that will work for the grappler. Um, but I, I, I'd like for us to, to, the consideration and the ask is to, number one, authorize us to, to deploy it.
Right.
And number two, try it with our one vehicle that we can equip it on and see if we have some success.
I really appreciate the mayor's comment that, uh, perhaps the reason that, uh, drivers are stopping is because they know that, um, they'll be treated compassionately. Sometimes the penalty for getting caught is worse than, than continuing to run, right? Um, and I also appreciate the preventive nature of this device. It sounds like you had some situations where you could tell that there was a risk of fleeing, and you could have prevented the flee from happening. And... To Alder Wood's comment, I, 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 the, the video from Livonia was the one that I watched. There were a few that I watched this afternoon on YouTube, where, you know, the rear, rear axle just pulled right off of that vehicle, and I understand that that's uncommon.
True.
Very uncommon. Um, but I also, um, read or saw that there was, um, less success in certain cold, snowy, icy conditions, not just because of the way that the vehicles might slide on the pavement, but because of the inability of the device to deploy in the same way that it might under warmer conditions. So just not a reason not to try it, but just something I had read. Um, I also wondered about the speeds that you have to be traveling at. It sounds like this device would not be used if speeds were to exceed seventy, eighty, ninety miles per hour. Is that correct?
So, yeah, and the research that we've done and looking at what the manufacturer's recommendations are and talking to the other agencies that actively deploy them, we've seen the, the top end sort of be a variety.
Yeah.
The common theme has been seventy-five, and that's what the manufacturer also supports.
Yeah.
As a top-end range.
Yeah.
Or, or speed.
Yeah.
Um, and so that's what we went with. And, and of course, this was evaluated and discussed at, at the committee level as well.
Yeah.
Um, and based on the research and the input, um, that's what we went with. We actually had a higher, uh, and I'm looking at you, Alder Kugel, because you recommended that change, which I support, um, a higher, um, starting speed, where, um, they couldn't be at zero, um, which now you can be. Um, they, the, the, the language that was originally proposed was, I think, fifteen or twenty-five miles an hour. Um, and we really, again, that was sort of the common theme, but we've heard and have seen success stories of, of preemptively deploying those, um, before, uh, folks got moving. Now, you, you do need them to move.
Yes, yes.
In order for the mechanics to work.
To work, right.
To, to wrap around the rear tire. Um, and I just want to make, make mention to your earlier point about, um, you know, again, preemptively deployment. Um, we do that now in, in our use of spike strips, um, where we literally have officers on a traffic stop, where the sub, and, and it's an attempt and a tactic that, that suspects use. They wait for you to walk up to the car, and then they take off, right? Um, there have been instances in which we, the suspect has not been in the car, uh, and that we've deployed, we've not know who the suspect is, say it's a stolen car, and we're sort of sitting on it, right? We preemptively deploy tire deflation devices discreetly behind the tires, um, and then we try to do the grab-on. The suspect eludes us and gets into the car and takes off. Well, now they're running on flat tires. And then here, again, we, we have a situation.
Yeah.
Where we're following a car that's running on rims, um, and with only one option currently to stop it, well, two. Number one, wait for it to, to stop and run on its bumper, um, or secondly, the, the precision and immobilization technique, the pit.
Pit, yeah.
Yeah. So we do that now. We, we deploy tire deflation devices now. This gives us another tool and a safer tool, and, uh,
Yeah.
That is there to show that it works. And to your point about the, the weather, um, again, that goes to, um, the training that we will provide that dictates when it's deployed.
Yeah.
Right? Um, we, um, I, we have to operate differently in different weather all the time, as you can imagine. Um, and there are some things, like our, our, our wiper fluid freezes, right? And so we have to adapt to that, right? And, okay, should we be out of commission because the car's not warm enough, uh, the, the wipers are, or the power fluid is, is, is frozen, right? Um, and we can't see out of our windshield, or it's leaking out, et cetera.
Yeah.
Um, so there's a variety of factors. There's also de-icing equipment that we might deploy, we'll work with the manufacturer on. I've heard about that, yes, that agency may not have been using de-icing materials, et cetera. So, um, yeah, a variety of options that we'll have to consider when we, if we're equipped with it and we start training with the manufacturer.
Yeah. I don't know if you know this. I'm, I just like to ask a lot of questions. I just know.
I, I talk a lot. We're a good combination.
But, I mean, I feel it's my responsibility, but also, I'm, and I'm, my questions are not conveying my, um, disapproval. I'm just seeking information. So a couple others that I wrote down. Um, so another thing that I think is really impressioning is how close the officer needs to get to the speeding car. But then I wonder, well, the pit maneuver requires you to actually touch the speeding car. So which, in your estimation, is safer for the officer?
The grappler.
The grappler is safer for the officer.
Um, so there's one, one of the examples you saw, there, there was contact made in, in the video. Um, that's not optimal, but it, it still works. Um, and that's why the bumpers, the front grappler device is a front bumper. It, in essence, replaces the front bumpers on a car now, or on the F-150 now. And so it's designed to make that contact, but, but optimally, you don't make contact other than the tether, other than the nylon, um, rope, um, strap. Um, and so the grappler by far, as your chief, is something that I am going to cheerlead all day long, uh, over the pit maneuver. But it depends on the scenario. Um, there, there may be instances in which the pit is, is more desirable. Um, uh, there may be, um, an issue in which the tether, because of the dynamics, because of the, 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 the difference between what's fleeing and then what you're operating in in the F-150. Uh, if you pit with an F-150, a small vehicle, I mean, that's going to react differently than our, our Explorer and a small vehicle. Do you know what I mean? And so there's a variety of factors that officers are going to have to, they're going to be trained on, but they're going to have to make those decisions on, on what's optimal.
And then just comparing it to current, uh, strategies, you know, you talk about tire deflation devices. It, tell me if this is accurate or not. I mean, so with tire deflation, you have to have one or two officers setting out the tire deflation device in addition to the officers that are pursuing the suspect. So it would feel to me like the grappler would actually require fewer human resources.
There may be a combination thereof.
Sure.
Right?
You're probably going to throw out all of your, right, yeah, you never know.
The goal, Alder, to your point, is to end the pursuit safely.
Yeah.
To all those involved. Um, tragically, many officers have lost their lives deploying tire deflation devices.
Yeah.
Uh, we have, uh, a deputy here in Dane County years ago who was, uh, injured, severely injured, um, career-ending injury as a result of, uh, being run over by the suspect during a tire deflation device. Um, as you know, um, in the case of Mr. Broger, our allegations, which I believe will be, be found to be true in court, are that he was, uh, high, right? And so you, you often have people who are making poor judgment decisions, um, based on their current state. Um, and, uh, that is not an excuse for, uh, illegal behavior, um, certainly to that extreme. But you also have to deal in and factor what state of mind that person might be in, if you even knew that. Um, and so deploying a tire deflation device is one of the, the most dangerous things that officers can do because they're out in the open and they're so vulnerable. We are trained to try to get behind cover and, and a barrier, um, if one's available, but sometimes you don't, you're not that lucky. So the grappler, again, I wouldn't come, and I, I hope that you know this. I wouldn't come before you if I didn't think that this was something that can save lives. Um, and honestly, I do.
Yeah, that's all, those are all my questions.
With some helpful motivation by one of your colleagues, uh, to actually, you know, own it, own it, chief, and just, just do the research and come before you and, and talk about it.
Yeah, thank you. Patrick?
Let's see. Uh, what was it again? Uh, can, can you, in your opinion, you haven't used the grappler yet, but do you feel that it is safer for officers to do than, to implement that than the pit maneuver?
I think it depends. Um, surely, the data that we've seen and talking to the, the agencies that we've communicated with, it's the preferred method, if that tool's available, um, because of all the things that I've mentioned, uh, it's more controlled. Um, it's safer in the term, in terms of, once it's deployed, uh, it'll, in essence, it, it's like some of you who have, uh, children. I do not, of course, but, uh, I hear that they're, they're rascals when they're younger and they try to get away from you, and then the mom or dad reaches out the arm to hold on to the kid, and the, the feet are still running, right? And I think that that is sort of what, in terms of what I'm thinking of, is like, okay, I'd rather do that than shove the kid and make them fall. Uh, the pit maneuver is making them fall.
Do you, uh, do you think this can help bridge the gap between residents who want active policing and residents who want less risk during pursuits?
One hundred percent. Um, I think that this is something that, um, you know, as a de facto risk manager that you've hired, uh, in the city, it's something that would help to mitigate the, the risk in, uh, in terms of liability, damage, injury, loss of life. Um, this is another tool on our belt that, uh, will help reduce that.
So this is kind of another decision, uh, that you get to make, whether you're going to let someone go because, or risk a dangerous chase. It's kind of a middle ground.
Yeah, well, you know, we're, we're still going to abide by all the things that are leading up to this policy insert, right? Um, when or when not to pursue. All of those factors are still in play. Um, and so just because we are, uh, you potentially are going to authorize us to have this, it doesn't mean that it's, it's free for all. Uh, it's open season. You still, we're still bound by that policy. We're still bound by law, um, in which, um, the determination is to either pursue or once we've made the decision to pursue, do we continue to pursue if the circumstances change? And I think you've, I've showed or tried to demonstrate, if I haven't, I will do a better job. There have been many a cases in which, you know, we, you often hear the number. You often hear Manona's participated in thirty-five pursuit. What you don't hear is the amount of times in which we've terminated those pursuits because, and I've tried to do a better job of highlighting that, but the amount of times we've actually terminated the pursuits because the conditions warrant, uh, that we terminate.
How does having a grappler maybe align with national trends towards early intervention tactics or reducing force whenever possible?
You know, you have, that's a, that's a great question. No, we didn't prep this, folks.
Yeah.
No, we, we didn't prep this. Um.
I think Patrick's using AI to phrase his questions over there.
We, um, it's, it's a great, it's a great question. And I think that, um, I think that's why you have so many of our colleagues, my colleagues looking on and, and seeing what we do or what the decision is, regardless of what it is. Um, because there, I think they see the opportunity here. Um, and, um, you know, when you talk about um, mitigating, um, deterring, um, this device does that. Um, and it provides the additional tool on the belt. I keep giving that reference, but it, it in essence is uh, an additional resource on our belt to help really reduce, uh, the amount of pursuits that, uh, we get into. And if we get into them, to end them sooner. That answer your question or did I?
Thank you.
I don't want to get into the weeds on this, uh, but I'm envisioning that, that in addition to the purchase price, that you might need an annual operating expense or something like that to purchase cases of, um, the webbing, you know, the webbing material, because basically it looks, it looks, right. Because I was going to say, it looks like it would be destroyed every time you deploy it. It's a one-shot deal and so then you have to put another bit of webbing on, yes?
Yes. The webbing is the, what you replace. It's similar in concept to when somebody runs over a tire deflation device. You have to purchase another tire deflation device, right?
Right.
Um, and so, a-again, this is, uh, sort of a, we believe it's going to work. I'm asking you for authorization to deploy it. Let's see if it's effective. And then I may come before you for 2027 and say, I'm asking for X amount of operating funds to keep our city safer and our officers safer because I have proven that this has worked. But I can't even equip it, mayor, um, and, and on another vehicle.
Right.
Um, without that vehicle. But in terms of utilization and how many we have on the shelf, so to speak, currently, and if, if, if approved in our operating budget, um, we will likely have enough to equip about four or five of these in our fleet, um, for the, for the replacements, four or five replacements.
So there, in, in the, in the fleet, there are four or five vehicles that could be equipped with this.
There's one vehicle that could be equipped.
That's what I was, okay.
I'm, I apologize. I'm, I'm using the
Four or five reloads.
Yes, reloads is
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood. Yep.
Yes.
And they're four hundred dollars per reload.
Yep.
Per reload.
Yeah.
You have seventy-five dollars credit too for, say, buying a refurbished NED.
Right. So we would, we would turn in the old used one, they'd buy it, they'd refurbish it, and we'd get a seventy-five dollar credit when we turned it in.
Yeah.
And so in the case of use, like the, even the picture, you know, even though the axles went out from it, let's assume the axles didn't go out from under the car, looked like the belt line to me. Um, uh, or similar type scenario, uh, do you just cut the webbing away from, from your end? And then when the tow truck comes to haul the, they take the webbing with them or how, I mean, it's a
Yeah. So that's part of the training, number one. But also, our, uh, tow provider is going to be trained on that too.
Okay.
And we contract with a certain tow provider who actually equips our front bumpers for a lot of our cars. Um, and so that tow provider would also be trained in how to, there's, there shouldn't be any cutting involved.
Okay.
It's unraveling and taking the tire off and the wheel off, et cetera, to, to keep it all intact.
Okay.
And according to our tow provider, who is, uh, also looking at ways for us to reduce pursuits and, you know, they don't want their truck drivers showing up on, you know, horrible scenes either.
Sure.
Um, uh, they are not going to charge us for that cost.
Any other questions? Again, there's a couple of weeks. Yeah.
More of a future budgetary question, and Mark's not here, but I, I wonder if the original purchase of the piece of equipment is a capital expense. Because it's going to presumably last as long as the car, at least, I would think.
My, my, if, if we were to equip a future vehicle, I would roll that into the, the project request.
Yeah, okay.
We'll verify that, Alder. I think it's, certainly if something happened, yeah, certainly for a new, new, the new outfitting, absolutely, I believe, would be just considered, the chief usually has a, a package that comes with it.
Yeah.
That would certainly be part of it. In terms of like replacing, resetting it, that we'd have to look into, see exactly where that would go.
Well, no, the new, the we, the, yeah, the webbing, I don't, yeah, that's not going to be capital.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Please reach out if you have any questions, of course, um, between now and next time, or else I'll become, I'll be here, ready to answer questions and so. Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, that takes us to reports of committees, commissions, boards, mayor, city administrator, city attorney, department managers, sustainability efforts, and diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts. And I'm going to turn to our police and our fire since
Can fire go first?
Sure, since Jerry is one way.
Sorry, chief.
Very nice.
Thanks for the break, Jerry. Um, well, hello again. Um, no, I just wanted to highlight, um, our monthly, um, so our October report. If you haven't had the opportunity to do so, please, um, take a look. Um, you know, it gives our hard stats and what we've been working on, what we've been doing. Um, we try our best to talk about a lot of our outreach efforts that we do as well. Um, our school resource officer, uh, you know, not too long ago, you received a report about that program and the work that the SRO does in the schools. Um, we are going to be hopefully here soon, fully staffed. Uh, we've been down an officer for most of the year. Uh, we've, uh, made a conditional job offer to a full-time officer. We're waiting on the results of that. A part-time officer will be starting soon at the academy and will get out, uh, roughly about May of next year. Um, and so now is the opportunity for Chief Chaney to take on this wonderful idea he had, and I talked to the mayor about this too, about our traffic officer pilot program, right? So using the staffing that we currently have, now that we're fully staffed, to start a pilot program for a traffic officer to focus on, um, the residential traffic issues that, uh, I hear about regularly. Um, and even though sometimes, not all the time, but sometimes the data doesn't sort of justify, uh, me directing the complement of your resources to certain roads that are less traveled. I think that it's important for our residents to see, um, enforcement efforts. But I do want to point back to that traffic dashboard just briefly. Please know that we are receptive to complaints and concerns and, uh, every dot that's plotted on that map, you can just Google it right now because of how many times it's been, uh, Googled, Manona Traffic Dashboard. Or just Manona Traffic, I think, at this point, and that dashboard will come up. And it'll plot every spot this year and last year in which an officer has done proactive traffic enforcement, uh, in Manona. It also plots where our crashes are, which I'm very determined to reduce. Um, and why you see a lot of emphasis on our major thoroughfares because that's where injuries occur. Um, but the, the traffic officer should be like our, our community relations officer and be a little bit more of a, that direct resource uh, for folks that have specific traffic concerns, um, and help with some problem solving as well. So we hope to have that up and running, uh, next year. Thank you very much, Neil. We hope to have that up and running, uh, next year, and I hope to be able to report on how that's going. But Neil put up for us, uh, the traffic dashboard. Neil, that's last year. If you can toggle to this year, which is in the top left. Yes.
This year.
This year. So the dots on the map show our efforts. If you see things that are outside of Manona, that's likely has a Manona nexus, right? Where, say, the traffic complaints, zoom out, please, Neil, you'll see the traffic complaint originally started in Middleton. Um, but we probably stopped them in Manona, right? So we, we, we observe ourselves, the, the poor driving behavior, establish probable cause to make that stop and stop them in Manona. But we're aware of them outside of our community. So that's where a lot of the, the plotting you see is occurring. And, but we are also deputies, right? So if we receive a complaint in Manona, we're behind a vehicle. We don't see the violation on Manona Drive or on Dean, uh, and then it continues into the city of Madison. And then we'd observe the same reported behavior, but now in Madison, we're going to stop that vehicle. And utilize our deputization powers. That's, that's not super common, but we have that authority. And then that's it?
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Neil.
Um, it takes us to, unless Sarah Dooman has something she wants to say online, which I don't think so. Uh, Rick, do you want to start this one?
Uh, I have no report.
Theresa?
Um, I have a little report. Um, because of our committees of the whole meetings, transit and community media did not meet, so we'll be rescheduling those. Um, so I'll leave Brian to talk about Public Works and then I'll just say a few words about sustainability. Um, I think anyone who follows the City of Manona Facebook page, uh, has heard the news that we've got a new, um, assistant city planner who is traditionally the liaison to the Sustainability Committee. We have not been meeting, um, as a committee for a few months now and it, we're just probably going to hold off a little while longer. Um, the mayor and I and Neil will be meeting and trying to continue to work out what sustainability means, what the committee might look like. Um, maybe meet with, uh, other municipalities, other communities and learn from, uh, from them, how they advance some of these very big and lofty goals through, uh, all areas of their, um, um, city operations, which is no small task. But in between the big task, um, sustainability has one little. Uh, we'll also be meeting before the end of the year. It's by hope to meet with Neil. And, uh, representatives from Park, probably, uh, Director Anderson or, uh, possibly Missy. And, uh, just to talk about the transition of the Manona Tree Program, um, over to, um, staff. And then finally, again, in between the big stuff, um, something fun and light that I'll end on. Um, everybody knows that Public Works is collecting leaves and Public Works also wants to help educate citizens about what we can all do to make that collection go faster. Um, how we can keep leaves out of the street to lower the phosphorus load in Lake Manona. So last year, the Sustainability Committee thought they'd grab the attention of the grownups by engaging the kids in a coloring contest. We've run it again. So if you've got a kid, a kiddo in grades kindergarten through fifth grade, um, your child can win a ride in a Manona Leaf Truck. You just want to grab your coloring sheets at the library or at City Hall. They're also available from the City of Manona website. Um, the last day to enter is, or the last day to turn in your coloring sheet is Wednesday, close of business. And then the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, everyone who turns in a coloring sheet will be meeting down at the Public Works Garage. They get to meet a leaf truck and talk to a real-life leaf truck driver and maybe even ride in a truck. Um, so thank you to the Public Works, uh, team for picking this year's winner. They'll be judging those, which is pretty funny.
Brian?
We don't have a Public Works meeting until next month.
Yeah.
No other report.
Thank you. Doug?
Um, just a couple of things. License review, we had, um, we had invited both Breakwater and Buck and Honeys to come in because we had noticed they were advertising, uh, more outdoor, um, music events than they had permits for. Um, so there was some concern about that they were doing it. Buck and Honeys did come and explained and sounded like, um, innocent oversight. But the, the more the issue is, right now we have a limit of sixty events. Um, and I think, you know, might be, the committee might be having a discussion about whether that's enough or not or whether we could go a little bit higher, um, try to find the right number. Because we really haven't gotten much pushback from complaints, really, for the most part, so there's that. Um, then landmarks, we, the, uh, State Historical Society had the, uh, public information meeting on the Frostwoods Historic District last week. Uh, and on Friday, the State Board just, uh, approved it and forwarded the nomination to the National Park Service. So, um, yeah, that's, um, and then the last thing, I did have a chance to meet with Henry Bisby, the new planner today, and him and, he and Doug, and, um, had a good discussion, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Patrick?
No report.
Rachel?
Um, facilities meets Wednesday. Um, reviewing the library HVAC plans and then just historical maintenance overview and future plans.
Right. Great, thank you. Lee?
Um, I'll have candidate packets ready for pickup starting tomorrow. So three Alders, Alder DePula, Alder Holquist, and Alder Radamacher are up for reelection this coming year. So if you're interested, please pick up papers or anyone else, leave my office.
So is that why we needed to pass the, the salary thing tonight? Or I thought it wasn't until December one.
Circulation starts December one, so you can get your packets, get some paperwork filled out prior to the circulation.
I would still like to have it done before we did anything, just to be crystal, kind of really nice and clean on that, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, a couple of things. Um, one thing budget-wise that we, I forgot to, I think we forgot to mention is that the actual public hearing on the operating budget will be on December first. So at the next meeting, we will actually have the official public hearing for the budget on that. So if anyone's interested in that, please come and provide your comments. Um, staff is getting ready to proceed with our, uh, comprehensive plan consultants, kind of do an internal workshop, uh, with, with the consultants and our, and our department heads on, uh, December fifth. Just to kind of get a couple of kind of information, we're going to be asking departments to pull together and how they'll be involved through the process throughout the remainder of the process for over the next year. Um, just to note that, uh, obviously we are getting into cooler weather and there's still a significant number of private construction going on. Uh, so folks notice, there's a lot of work going on on Saturdays. They are sending us emails and asking if they can continue to work on Saturdays. We generally do not, our ordinance does not allow that. Uh, they have to ask permission to do that from me, or a building inspector. So as long as they give me a reason, they've, you know, weather delayed a contract or something came in late, whatever. We, we allow them to work, uh, uh, usually on Saturdays. And the good, one thing we do is, I think the normal start time is seven AM. We do push them to eight AM on Saturdays just for, to get a little bit more. So that you will see, if you're seeing a lot of activity on Saturdays on those sites, that's probably why. They're trying to get as much wrapped up before the weather really sets in for this coming year. Um, we did receive notice from, uh, our, our attorneys that, um, obviously, you know, folks are familiar, Walmart has at least, I think, two challenges, uh, in front of us on their assessments at this point. They have, uh, they've basically been stayed in terms of waiting for some existing, uh, cases going through the appellate court. So it's essentially the same methodology, the same individuals involved in it. So they're waiting rather than them spending money and us spending money on the, for when the, the other decision's probably going to give us the direction we need. Uh, they've agreed to those stays and are kind of just watching those, those other cases make their way through the courts. Um, staff shared with the, um, with the school district, there's a, the regional planning commission is actually doing a, uh, an overview and Alderwood actually forwarded it to me first, a, a, kind of an information session on population projections for the county. Uh, interestingly enough, we think, what is it, Alderwood is about a hundred thousand difference on Dane County. I think is what we've heard from the State Department of Administration and what the county is actually, RPCs. And historically, the RPC has been considerably more accurate, uh, than what the state has on that, so, um.
Eight hundred and eighty thousand by twenty fifty.
Can you say that again?
Eight hundred and eighty thousand population in Dane County by twenty fifty.
It's a lot of folks.
Now six hundred thousand, so.
Um, a couple of, uh, other dates want to throw out there. The River Rink opens on the twenty-second. So do that for Director Anderson. Hopefully the weather's starting to get colder just in time, hopefully. Sounds like that should work out pretty well. Uh, their Light the Ice event is actually on the twenty-ninth at five-thirty, so come on out for the holiday season, get it kicked off and on its way. Last note, uh, in terms of, you know, I think we've had a couple of conversations and discussions as to whether or not, you know, how, how local municipalities may be impacted by things like the Big Beautiful Bill at the federal level. Uh, one thing that, um, Director Kimmel is dealing with right now is that his overtime has now been declared exempt uh, by, from the federal, the Fair Labor Standards Act in the, in that bill. Uh, now we are forced to be doing a report, there's a reporting requirement and also a notification requirement to requirement to staff. Our payroll systems are not set up to do the reporting that they are asking us to do in terms of how we track our overtime. So Director Kimmel's doing a lot of background work, trying to figure out exactly how, and of course, there's been no guidance issued from the federal government on exactly how to do this. So we're hopefully, we're hoping our payroll software is kind of, kind of comes up with a, I won't say miraculous solution, but a patch or something that'll help us meet this reporting requirement. I mean, it was something as simple as, do we have to now include this information on their W-2 for employees? We don't know, but I'm not sure if that'll do it or not, so. So there's going to be a lot of energy and effort going into that right now. So in case anybody was wondering if, if there are effects, there definitely are effects to how we operate at the local level from those types of federal decisions, so. That's my report, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. I just have a few things. First of all, I want to say welcome to Henry Barbie, myself, who's the new Plan One. And I joined, Deb Plowman is Plan Director on November fifth for a Smart Growth Greater Madison meeting that was held here in Manona. And we were able to basically bring and brag or show and tell, if you will, about the growth and redevelopment that's going on in Manona. And while there were a lot of development, and it was specifically geared towards architects and developers and people in the trades, all around development and, well, certainly there were, there were a fair number of people there that we already knew. It's because we have had a lot of redevelopment and I would say that the rest of the crowd was pretty surprised when, when Doug popped up, you know, the slides about, you know, like where development was three, two or three years ago and then what's going on now. So it was a good meeting overall. I had a tour and meeting at WPS, which was terrific. And I, there's been a lot of rumors because they've selling, they've sold all but one building as to whether they might be going somewhere. And it's exactly the opposite of that. They're actually, they just put ten million dollars in renovating the one building they're keeping. Actually in twenty-three states now. But this is headquarters and Wendy Perkins, who's the president and CEO, was at that meeting, has been on our educational foundation and her kids went to MGE and they're not going anywhere. But they really continue to be as a company, they're going to have three hundred and fifty people returning to work, hybrid, on a hybrid schedule. And they continue to be probably the most progressive company we have in Manona as it relates to sustainability. So it was really terrific to get the tour. We have requested a tour of the bloom, which is going to be finished very soon. We're landscaping right now. And so that tour will be, request has been made for the Plan Commission and for the City Council and we'll let you know, just, just know that we've requested that tour. If you didn't watch the Plan Commission meeting on the tenth, it included a pre-hearing for GDP for mixed-use development being proposed by Galway companies. And it represents a pretty dang big, a new piece, another new piece down where Topogolf is, so I highly recommend it to, to, for watching. School board meeting on November eleventh, where the discussion began around the sale of Maywood School and the potential sale of the Nichols property. And it's safe to say the, the sale of Maywood was very positively received and their, their intention is to give us the right of first refusal as the tenants, current tenants. And I, you know, I think Nichols is going to be a much longer discussion, but the bottom line is that the school district is looking at about thirty-five million dollars in deferred maintenance for which they have no funding in the rest of their buildings. So, so they're just thinking, starting the discussions. And I, and because they've started the discussion, I would imagine we're probably going to be starting some discussions, too. The legislature just introduced the, some of the Democratic senators in the legislature just introduced a series of bills called Strengthening Local Communities. There's three bills in particular, just to kind of cue up the topic. This is not meant to be the end-all and be-all. But the first one was to make an adjustment to shared revenues. Fortunately, that's for communities over fifty thousand, so it wouldn't apply to us. But nonetheless, it, like I said, it's, it's the cue up to topics and establish priorities. Second was modernization of TIF by raising value, the valuation limit and removing the mixed-use development cap. And then the third one is TIF-specific to affordable housing that would extend TIF for three years for the express purpose of building affordable housing. So keep an eye on that. And finally, just today, you probably, you may have read that Evers announced another fourteen million in grants for electric charging stations. So they're going to go into fuel convenience stores, restaurants, lodging, and retail all over the state, so another fourteen, another fourteen million. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I don't believe. On my agenda. There are no appointments tonight. And so with that, I will be happy to take-
Want to do a turn?
Turn? Second?
Second.
Have a second. All those in favor, say hi?
Hi.